The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order, the March 13th meeting of the Cary Town Council. I'll note for the record that Councilmember Bush is absent this evening. Mr. Smith, I'll call on you to provide our ceremonial opening.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to remind everyone this Monday is St. Patrick's Day. This is the one day in America, I believe, we all have a bit of the Irish spirit in us. And speaking of spirit, the good news is, when I first joined the council, there were no Irish pubs in Cary, and now we have at least five. So you've got to admit, we're making progress.
Work well done, Jack.
In Cary, it's also the day we celebrate a common bond of friendship with our sister city in Meath, Ireland. By the way, in three weeks, we will be hosting Meath Councilor Brian Fitzgerald and Jackie McGuire, Meath's first female country manager. Cary is truly blessed to have a diverse citizenry actively involved in our sister city efforts. In fact, on Saturday, March 22nd, at our recently restored and renovated The Cary, Sister Cities of Cary, along with the town, will be hosting the first annual Kaili. That's a Celtic, a Celtic festival which celebrates Scottish and Irish cultures. It's an evening of music and dance, all performed by local Celtic artists. You won't want to miss it, and tickets are going fast. Ben, I'm also hoping that you have some pull and can get The Cary to show the quintessential John Wayne, Marina O'Hara, John Ford, classic film, The Quiet Man. I'm counting on you to deliver. It is the all-time best Irish-American movie. Let me close with this traditional, short, and sweet Irish proverb. May the hinges of our friendship never grow rusty. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We're at the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved?
A second. Motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. That takes us to recognitions, reports, and presentations. This is item 2-1 on your agenda. And at this time, I'll ask Mr. Jonathan Jones, Executive Director of North Carolina Open Government Coalition, to join me at the podium for a presentation of the Sunshine Week proclamation.
I know in Cary, we do a lot of things to have one of the most open governments that could possibly be, and we're very proud of what we've accomplished, and very glad that you're here to receive this proclamation. So without further ado, I will read the proclamation. Whereas Sunshine Week is a national initiative to open a dialogue about the importance of open government and freedom of information, Sunshine Week is a good public relations opportunity to empower the citizens to play an active role in their government, which can make their lives better and our community stronger. An open and accessible government is vital to establishing and maintaining the people's trust and confidence in their government and in their government's ability to effectively serve its citizens. Officials and employees at the Town of Cary understand and support both the spirit and the letter of North Carolina's Sunshine laws. Two of the town's statement of values reflect its strong commitment to maintaining a culture of openness and transparency, which is directly aligned with sunshineweek.org, National Initiative Them, National Initiative Them, Open Government is Good Government. Our organization exists to serve our citizen. We will be open to ensure access, encourage involvement, and be accountable to our citizens. We will be honest, ethical, and diligent. Our actions will comply with local, state, and federal laws. The Town of Cary commits during Sunshine Week and throughout the year to work diligently to enhance the public's access to government records and information, to ensure that all official meetings are fully noticed and open to the public, and proactively reach out to our public to learn how we can improve in this area. The Cary Town Council fully supports the town's 2014 Week, Sunshine Week's activities for town staff, which includes a variety of informational sessions and interactive activities with an open government theme and a focus of importance of good records management. So now, therefore, I herald Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the Town of Cary, North Carolina, on behalf of the entire Cary Town Council, to hereby proclaim March 16th through March 22nd as Sunshine Week in the Town of Cary, as an expression of support for this open government initiative that is consistent with the Town of Cary's culture and practices, proclaim this 13th day of March 2014.
Thank you so much.
Mayor Weinberg and Council, I want to thank you for this proclamation. I don't think that I can say it any better than you've said it in your proclamation, but a commitment to transparency, to doing the public's business in front of the public is the foundation of democracy. It allows your citizens to have faith and trust in the work that you're doing. And so, on behalf of the North Carolina Open Government Coalition, I thank you, and I appreciate this proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you. We've now reached the Public Speaks Out portion of our meeting. This is item 3. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. If you'd like to speak, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have up to three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic that is not a public hearing. And tonight, we have no public hearings, so you can talk about anything you'd like to talk about. There's a three-minute time limit, which I will enforce to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer located on the podium. When the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining, and when the yellow light turns red, that means your time is up. At that time, I'll interrupt you and ask you to immediately conclude your comments, and I thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to the three-minute time limit. We also ask that speakers, that groups have speakers or spokespersons to speak on behalf of the entire group, and to not do repetitive comments. I thank everyone in the audience for respecting our business meeting tonight. Please do not applaud on comments, or make remarks from your seat, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. Now, this time, I'm going to open up the Public Speaks Out for anyone who would like to speak, and at this time, I'll invite the first speaker to the podium, be it a aisle to my right, and give the clerk your, well, you've already given the clerk your card. Welcome.
John Yocum. I've lived in Kildare Farms for over 26 years, and I'm here to address the proposed enhancements at the intersection of Cary Parkway and Kildare Farms Road. I fully support enhancements. Unfortunately, while the proposal on the table predicts some relief for various commuter pain points, it is not focused directly on addressing the most significant intersection deficiencies and evaluates only rush hour queuing at this one intersection. The changes proposed will have significant impacts all day long, seven days a week, on the approximately 15,000 residents in the immediate area. They directly impact at least 17 nearby traffic-like controlled intersections, two as close as 800 feet, as well as 33 other intersections, and several residential and business driveways. No information, either positive or negative, has been provided on these directly related impacts. Also lacking is an estimate of the probability of quickly negating the anticipated benefits by increased traffic on Cary Parkway actually promoted by the changes. Cary Parkway is increasingly serving as an alternative to US 64 for people in Western Apex commuting to Raleigh. The proposal constitutes a profound change to the character of the heart of Kildare Farms, the first planned unit development in North Carolina. It replaces 40 trees with seven lanes of concrete and eliminates medians known to provide safety. Working within your processes, easily observable questions were provided in January that remain unanswered today. Prior history demonstrates when traffic constraints are altered in one location, issues develop elsewhere. The pattern to date in this area has been that queuing reductions on major roads tend to increase queuing in our neighborhoods. Brakes in major traffic flows are an essential part of residential access. This intersection deserves skilled surgery. Based on the limited insight provided, this proposal is at best a triage and will leave permanent scars. I respectfully request the Council obtain a more comprehensive analysis of the impacts on the surrounding area, illustrating the desirability of this plan for more than just commuters, while having the staff also evaluate other potential alternatives that more directly address the most congested traffic flows. Let's make sure our investment returns the most overall benefits while maintaining the desirability of our neighborhoods. Thank you for your willingness to improve this intersection and the opportunity to express my concerns. If I can assist in any way, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Yocum. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, I'll close Public Speaks Out, and we move to the consent agenda. This is item 4, for the benefit of people watching on TV. We're going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. Included on the consent agenda are minutes, the Western rezoning items, 13REZ 31, the Harvey property rezoning items, 13REZ 30, Campo project funding, Duke Energy Street billing, streetlight billing, a contract award for engineering services, and interlocal agreement for shared radio system infrastructure. Would councilmembers like any of these items polled from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
A second. There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We now move to item 5-1. It's the scope options to reduce congestion through the intersection improvement projects. Ms. Dwygans of our staff will present the information. Council may vote on this item tonight. Ms. Dwygans.
Good evening, Council. The reduced congestion through intersection improvements project was approved by Cary voters as a part of the Cary Community Investment Bond Referendum in November 2012. Details about the scope of the project, the type of improvements considered, and the location of the five intersections recommended for improvements were listed specifically as a part of the bond referendum. The purpose of the project is to make operational, safety, and pedestrian improvements at intersections with deficiencies that can be improved through minor improvements. For many of these intersections to operate at an acceptable level of service, improvements needed would far exceed the scope of this project. The major intersections chosen for this project have some of the highest volumes in Cary, such as the Cary Parkway and Kildare Farm Road intersection. Staff believes that as a result of the proposed improvements, these controlling intersections will improve the overall flow of the network. A public workshop was hosted by staff on January 8th to present and receive feedback on proposed improvement options on the five major intersections. Staff has received numerous comments and community interest about the project as a result of the public involvement effort. There have been a lot of positive comments supporting the improvements, however, there have also been some concerns that mainly address a loss of landscaping and pedestrian accessibility issues. Staff's goal is to minimize impacts to trees and landscaping and to maintain the attractive integrity of the intersections. Adequate accommodations are provided within the project designs for all modes of transportation, including pedestrians, to ensure safety. Staff's recommended options for improvements at each intersection are listed in the report and reflect a combination of improvements that will provide the greatest benefit to each intersection. The recommended improvements can be considered separately, and Council may choose to construct one or all of the recommended improvements to still achieve some benefit at the intersections. Now, I would like to walk Council through some of the major improvements proposed at each intersection by showing you the public workshop maps. This intersection is the Kildare Farm Road and Cary Parkway intersection. One of the proposed improvements is to provide a right turn lane on the eastbound Cary Parkway, where my cursor is showing right here. An additional improvements include eastbound and westbound left turn lanes, which would provide dual left turn lanes on this side and the side. And another addition would be to add a southbound right turn lane on, I'm sorry, Kildare Farm The wooden signal poles would be upgraded to metal pole mast arms, and additional pedestrian improvements would be added to the intersection, such as upgrading the wheelchair ramps to current ADA standards, and to provide high-visibility crosswalks. A landscaping revegetation plan is also considered for this intersection. The next intersection to consider is Cary Parkway and Evans Road. The proposal at this intersection includes a southbound right turn lane on Evans Road with a new sidewalk, and a additional left turn lane on eastbound Cary Parkway. Additional pedestrian improvements include signalized pedestrian crossings and crosswalks, and upgrading wheelchair ramps to current ADA standards. A revegetation plan is proposed for the median on Cary Parkway. Maynard Road and Chapel Hill Road includes proposing a lane reconfiguration to add an additional left turn lane and to restripe this segment of roadway. A new decorative stamped concrete porch up island would be located on the eastbound side of Chapel Hill Road, and a high-visibility crosswalk would help connect the Black Creek Greenway across Chapel Hill Road. The Maynard Road and High House Road intersection includes a high-visibility crosswalk connecting the Black Creek Greenway across High House Road, and an additional right turn lane on westbound Maynard Road. This intersection also includes upgrading to metal pole mast arms as well. This intersection is Cary Parkway near the US 1 and 64 ramps. This intersection will allow two continuous through lanes to continue through the interchange on Cary Parkway. One of the two northbound through lanes currently drops as a right-only turn lane. Staff recommends moving forward with the design and construction of the proposed intersection improvements on the report. Does Council have any questions that I may answer?
Ms. Dwygans, we had a lot of feedback on the Cary Parkway and Kildare Farm Road. If you could take us back to that slide.
Sure.
I have some questions there, and I think other councilmembers do.
Okay.
The first issue is pedestrian safety. If you could briefly let the public know what we're doing to enhance pedestrian safety. Some of the comments I received in email said, "You're widening the road. I don't think I'll be able to cross it as a pedestrian. There are a lot of elderly that live nearby that area. How are you going to help us?" And that kind of thing. So if you can help me, or help everyone, understand what we're doing for pedestrian safety.
Sure. This intersection currently has countdown signal pedestrian heads, which allows pedestrians to see how long they have to actually cross the road. And we're currently using a signal timing plan that allows more time for pedestrians to cross the road, which includes the elderly and children. It gives people a little bit longer to get across than our original signal plan did. We're also proposing to upgrade the wheelchair ramps to current ADA standards. We're actually only adding about 12 feet of pavement anywhere that we're adding a right turn lane, so there would only be an additional 12 feet of pavement to cross the road. In the median, since it's already a landscape median, you're really only adding extra pavement there, but not additional width to cross at that location.
Okay. One of the other questions I've got related to pedestrian crossings, and we talked about this at a previous meeting, is if we would consider an auditory, or I don't know what they're called, signaling. Are we considering that at these intersections or not?
That's something, I believe they're audible pedestrian signals, and it is something that staff is currently looking into and plans to come back to Council with a recommendation. And depending on the results of that study, it's something we could consider for this project.
Okay. Another series of emails I got talked about the vegetation and trees being removed. If you could help us understand what we did to protect trees, and where we're losing those trees, and what we're revegetating, and that type of thing, that would be helpful.
Okay. Staff is making every effort to minimize impacts to tree removal at this intersection. Unfortunately, with the lane widening, some trees would have to be removed. Trees for the dual left turn lanes would need to be removed in the median along Cary Parkway, which are mostly crepe myrtles and holly trees. On the southbound right turn lane, the only tree removal that would be needed is at the right-in, right-out, located here, which is about five crepe myrtles with some bushes. And then on the eastbound Cary Parkway approach, this location has several red oak trees and holly trees that would have to be removed there as well. Staff is, these plans are still conceptual, and we're still trying to determine exactly how much impact would be made to the landscaping. However, we believe on the eastbound right lane approach on Cary Parkway, that we would have about 15 feet of area to replant that and revegetate between the sidewalk and the, there would be a small retaining wall near the parking lot down here at the bottom. So it would be possible to revegetate, add some trees and shrubbery, and make that more enhanced at that location. And as you can see in the median, where there is not sufficient width for landscaping, staff is proposing a stamped concrete median along.
And that was actually my next question, so while you're talking about medians, show us where the stamped concrete medians will go.
Okay. The stamped, the stamped concrete median would start at the, basically near the crosswalk and continue, I think about maybe 200 feet, 100 to 200 feet back to where the lane would start to taper. And it would also be on the westbound Cary approach as well, about the same length. I believe about 200 feet at that point, too.
Okay. And then, one last question for me, and then I'm going to pass it to my colleagues, is what will this bring levels of service to in each direction? Where are we failing, and what will that take us to? Are we still going to be failing? If so, how much? And that kind of thing. You don't have to give the exact numbers. If you can give me a rough estimate, that would be good.
Sure. Well, currently, this intersection is operating over capacity, and the amount of congestion will just continue over time. Currently, we're trying to monitor the intersection and adjust the signal timing using our cameras, and making, you know, the use of flashing left arrows also helps reduce congestion. But over time, we're just going to continue to see more congestion. And with these improvements, it brings the intersection to a level of Service D in the AM peak hour, and a level of Service F in the PM peak hour. However, it is reducing the delays, the vehicle delays at that intersection significantly.
And I'll follow up to that, and then I promise I'll stop. By making changes on Cary Parkway, that will allow you to change signal timing for Kildare Farm Road?
At this intersection?
Yes.
Yes, the improvements that we can make at this intersection, this intersection is one of the highest-volume intersections, and it controls the network, basically, of all the other surrounding signals, so it should, we anticipate that it would help reduce the timing at the adjacent intersections.
So even though you don't see a lot of improvement on Kildare Farm Road, we could, we will see improvement because of the signal timing being changed, because of the improvements on Cary Parkway?
Right. By addressing, by adding capacity to Cary Parkway, by moving cars more quickly through the intersection, we'll be able to, should be able to add more green time to the Kildare Farm Road.
Very good. Councilmembers, questions?
I want to keep on that, that subject, because I didn't quite understand. I mean, the, you know, I think we've all got the same emails, so along the line of some of the things that you were talking about, the, one of the most common comments I get is that turning onto Kildare Farm, you've got a light so close by that, it's a real question of the cost that we're investing, is it going to really make that big a difference with just changing that timing? Or why not just change the timing now? You know, and, and save, save the money of the improvement of going, turning onto Kildar Farm Road. So that's just the comments that came up, and I think there's some merit to some of those comments. But the other question I have is, I remember when we approved that Doctors' Park, and it was the classic, we made an exception. And it was always, and the first thing we had is having to close some of the, you know, dual turns and make them right in and right out. That was many, many, many years ago. But have we talked to the properties, I'm not sure what we're allowed to do or not, but it gets very dangerous coming out of that Doctors'.
Oh, yeah.
It's very close, and if anybody wants to now get over to make a left turn... And if anybody wants to now get over to make a left turn, it's, it just can't happen. And it would seem to me that an easier solution would be to work with the property owner to direct that traffic to the lower one and come in and out. One, it's just safer type of thing. And on the other side, I don't see that congestion as much as maybe the daily commuters do. So I want to be real careful. But we have a lot of meetings here, so I'm going around 5:30 and that's the route I take. But on High Meadow, the minute you make the turn, the path of least resistance, there's an entry into the back way into Trader Joe's and it's blocked. And, you know, maybe it's anecdotal and you can prove me wrong, but the congestion we have on the Parkway is because we've got it all backed up because one person's trying to turn into that little lane that's too close to the intersection. It's a mess. The 18-wheelers, I think, have learned not to come at rush hour, but they can't make the turn unless they go to the outer lane to turn right. It, we, yeah, it feels like we're fixing the wrong problem. You know, we're trying to, as a town, not widen roads as the only solution. And I'm just not comfortable we've reached the point where we've studied, is there a better way to deal with that congestion at that intersection? I mean, I'm not the engineer. I don't know. But all I know is I go to those doctors and I use that High Meadow pass and at rush hour, they're both dangerous. And to me, that's where part of the problem needs to be fixed. And will that then free up some of the movement on Cary Parkway? My question, I guess, is, seems like we've got all the energy focused on this design. Has there been any effort to work with both those properties on fixing those problems? You've got a corner on both sides, a doctor's office and the shopping center, you know, where Trader Joe's is.
Well, I'd like to make sure I understand your question. You're saying at the doctor's office I'm pointing to here, at this driveway?
Yeah, that's the one.
That you're, the trouble getting out.
The traffic, when it is congested, is backed up past there. You can't get out.
Right.
So if someone lets you out, you still are at the mercy of getting over several lanes to get over to make a left turn. And, you know, I've got to believe with the activity in that doctor's park, I don't understand what would hurt them if it was all just moving down to the one farther to the west. I just don't understand why it can't be done.
Essentially closing their driveway?
Or just making it a right in.
Or making it a right in.
And make it a right in with restricted access out.
It's actually currently a right in, right outside.
Well, it is a right in.
You're saying take out the right, the right out.
Oh.
Because right now, when people, people do the, they want to come out to the right, but they don't want to just stay in the right-hand lane. They want to go all the way over to that turn lane. So then they-
You can't make it.
Yeah, you can't. It's too short of a-
So have we studied the accidents? Have we studied, you know, are we fixing the right problems? That's the question.
Well, I, I'm not sure if that has actually been studied or not at this driveway, although staff believes that the issue is really at the intersection itself due to the high volumes. And at High Meadow, a lot of people are using High Meadow to kind of make a shortcut, if you will, to go around this intersection. We can certainly look at the driveway access issues as well.
That seemed like another issue, but it's related.
But you know, it's the same problem we have over at Cary Parkway and High House Road with that gas station McDonald's.
Right, right.
People try to come out and they, and they get in the left-hand lane. So I think that's good that you're raising this because I think it is something that's occurring at many intersections.
It's, I think, for an $800,000 investment, I believe that's what it is. The other question that came up in a lot of the emails is the turning lanes that are being designed to help alleviate the traffic, that they're really needed on the opposite side. It's not the right turn lanes, it's the other side.
I can, I can tell you that I travel this a lot and the Kildare Farm Road, coming from the top of the screen to the bottom of the screen.
Oh, going that way? Okay.
Going south.
I'm talking about PM.
Okay.
Which is the worst. It backs up like two intersections or two sets alike, or actually sometimes all the way to Maynard Road.
I don't have any, I don't have any experience that way.
Anyway, a lot of them are trying to turn right. If you're in that right turn lane, I'd say half the cars are turning right. So that will help. The turning left movement, they have to sit there forever. And that's what drives them around the shopping center because not only is the queuing bad, but the timing is so long. And then they go around the back of the shopping center and you have people trying to get out of the back of the shopping center. That's one I would like to close, is these people going out of the back of the shopping center. But that backs up about 20 cars at rush hour.
But that's a very effective and good circum, you know-
Sure.
Circumnification. Yeah, yeah. For, for Kildare Farm. I mean, we should be encouraging people to use High Meadow.
No problem.
By making that signal easy and, you know-
If you didn't have those, that, that back entrance in, which offers no real value add to people.
So, so getting back to this, by letting the volume go through Cary Parkway, you should be getting more green time, which was said earlier, on that left turn movement, and you should be moving people through Kildare Farm better. It's still going to operate at a level of service F, which I think is what you said.
Correct.
And so, yes, it's not going to fix it, but it will make it better. I contend, and this bothers me, when that traffic backs up three, four blocks, people on Kildare Farm heading to the top of the screen, trying to turn left at one of these gaps, and then somebody coming in the far right lane. I see that all the time and just cringe. Hopefully, that'll alleviate some of that. But there's a lot of hazards with that queuing that backs up so far, and I think this will help. It's not the silver bullet, that's for sure.
Mostly the southbound traffic. You're talking about the-
And the PM going from the-
PM, southbound.
Going out from Town Center.
Correct. Down, down towards McGregor. Yeah, I don't have any reservation about the additional right-hand lane on the southbound Kildare Farm. I have reservation about two elements, the first being the double lefts. And the question I have for staff is, can you get us numbers that tell us how many people are queuing up during rush hour to turn left versus how many people use that intersection for the remainder of the day trying to turn left? Because when you have that dual left, that means that you cannot turn left on green. And so then you have people who have late times in non-rush hour periods and they're just sitting there. They're just sitting there. Yeah. And so we, we're doing a trade-off there. The, so that's my first question. I'd love to get more information on those numbers.
Sure.
And then the second concern I have is, even though we're talking about having a small refuge there for pedestrians, when, and I'm going to use my experience with my children trying to cross Cary Parkway and High House Road, when you cross there, the people that you have to be concerned about are the people who are turning right on red because they're, they're looking up ahead and saying, "I don't see any cars coming. I can go." And then also your left turn lane, because I think they're supposed to yield when they're turning on left. They're supposed to yield to pedestrians, but they're not expecting pedestrians. And so that's dangerous. So if we're really going to enlarge this intersection to this width, I think it's important for us to go out and look for anything innovative that will, that is new and can caution drivers that there are pedestrians in the intersection. If there's any kind of like blinking red light that can flash when there's pedestrians in the intersection or a sign that says pedestrians, 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 because it's just not going to be comfortable crossing this many lanes unless you feel like you have extra provisions. And I think this is a classic example where we ought to be looking in the future to doing some kind of grade separating.
And actually, my only experience with a sign that flashes when a pedestrian has just started to enter is at SAS, right there by the umstep. When you come in, you'll see the light flashing. You haven't seen the person yet because of all the trees, of course. And boom, there they are. Saved many a person. But did you say, Ms. Dwygans, that actually the intersection isn't wider? It's that it's more concrete, but it's the same width? Or did I miss that?
Where we're proposing a right turn lane, the intersection will be 12 feet wider.
Okay, so it is 12 feet wide.
Yes, the, the extra left turn lane that doesn't add.
And this is happening, not at this intersection, but I've had a couple of emails this week from folks at Seastone that are having problems crossing at both Davis and then High House. And it's because people aren't expecting to see them. I was struck by what you said. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
You didn't.
Could I follow up?
Please.
So I was, Mr. Yocum made some excellent points. I really appreciate him coming tonight. I was, you know, when we looked at the High House Road and Cary Parkway intersection, you know, we looked at those seven designs and we got, or we looked at a whole bunch and we got it down to like four. And one of the things that I, that I recall we struggled with was making it better for two hours a day and making it worse for 22 hours a day. And so I want to make sure we don't do that here. And he talked about the day-long impacts, not just the rush hour impacts. I think there's real validity to that. But he mentioned, and my math, maybe I didn't take notes fast enough, but I thought he said that 17 traffic lights were impacted by this two within 800 feet. Is that true? And if so, can you tell us? Can you expand? I realize those are his numbers, not yours, but can you give us an idea of what the unintended consequences are to other intersections or other, yes, under intersections after this, before and after this one?
Okay. Well, I don't have the number of how many intersections are within this location, but I can tell you that since this intersection is the controlling intersection because it has the highest volumes, that any improvements to this intersection should reduce the signal timing at the other intersections surrounding it.
And that's because that's been studied or is that a theoretical thing that typically when a large intersection like this is improved, that that's typically what happens?
It's typically what happens.
Okay, so we haven't actually studied that. We might. It sounds like this is going to get some more review and we might want to just investigate the validity of that and how many would actually be impacted in a negative way. We're fine with things impacted in a positive way. I know that.
I would like to offer some information here.
Okay.
I think what he's talking about, or what he was referring to, are what they call platoons. And so between the red and green, cars stack up and then they move, and that's a platoon. And now when you have more volume going through an intersection quicker, the time between platoons is small.
Right.
And that will make his life harder, in his opinion.
Yes, to get out. Yeah.
While there's some validity to that, get back to your two hours a day, the, you're weighing that against the queuing and the dangers associated with queuing, which I think are much more significant and life-threatening compared to having a smaller window to get in and out in rush hour, because rush hour in this area is going to be congested anyway. I'm guessing he's also talking about all the intersections, north, south, east, west, they will all change as the volume goes through, but between time A and B, the same number of cars come through.
It's just how often they come through, right?
Yeah. And that, and that's what we're talking about. So yes, they'll have impacts on all of the intersections and he might view that as, or others might view that as negative and some might view that as positive. But that's my experience with it.
Pay's being a simulation engineer. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I mean, I just piggyback on that. As I said earlier, I don't really have any reservations about the additional right-hand lane on the southbound Kildare Farm. I'd be very interested in seeing what would happen if we lengthened the left turn lanes, the existing left turn lanes on Cary Parkway in both directions and added that right turn lane and allowed, you know, that, that right turn lane to go while the two left turn lanes are going. Like, how does that move traffic versus adding these two dual lefts? And how does that, how does that handle capacity?
There would actually be, well, first of all, landscaping-wise, there would be a lot more landscaping removed through the median on Cary Parkway because you would almost, I'm assuming you'd have to almost double the length of that turn, the left turn lanes on each side, which would impact all of these trees being back this way. I think it does help some, but the actual, you're able to move more cars. You need a longer, longer timing sequence for a longer lane as opposed to two cars going at one time as opposed to one car going at one time, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense, but I just wondered how impactful that second lane was.
Okay. It's something we can look at.
I'd just be intrigued.
And even on like off-peak times, like I travel through there on Sundays very frequently, the queuing lane's almost full every time. And that's non-peak. So I think, like she said, you'd have to go a long ways-
To pull it down.
-to help with that. And then when you have one lane like that, that long lane, your signal timing's going to be really long and that will impact the entire intersection. The, the value, I think, of the dual left turn lanes is you have a lower green time. I mean, yeah, lower green time, which improves green time everywhere else.
Based on the questions that we've been asking and Mr. Yocum's comments earlier and the emails we're getting, I'm kind of not comfortable voting on, on this one tonight. It is possible, if we wanted to, to have a motion for the rest of them leaving Kildare Farm and Cary Parkway out.
That's possible.
If we wanted to do so.
And what would you like returned back to you? What information would you like?
Well, it's, on each of the questions here, if there are other alternatives of doing some of these-
Let me ask, what alternatives have been studied?
We've also, well, we have studied at this intersection. We looked at the volumes on each direction. We, you know, staff would, looked at widening on Kildare Farm Road. However, there's no median to widen into and the right-of-way impacts would be substantial, especially to the businesses surrounding the roadway here. If, you know, if you were to widen to the, to the east, that would substantially impact the business on the corner. If, if for whatever reason, staff was to widen to the west to add a second turn lane going southbound on Kildare Farm Road, it would require widening about 700 feet back, which would impact a majority of trees. It would also require widening south about 700 feet to tie back into Kildare Farm Road, which would start impacting the neighborhood that's south of the business park. So we've tried to look at many different options.
So, so what I think I'm hearing, and don't let me put words in your mouth, is you looked at options for doing widening on Kildare Farm Road. One, there's not any room, so you'd be land acquisition, there would be vegetation removal, and it'd be much more expensive.
That's correct. To get, to get an optimal improvement, you almost need an interchange at this, at this particular intersection to bring it up to the level of service that, that we would like to see.
So having heard that, I want to go back to Mr. Urha and say, so what other questions would you like?
No, I mean, if you think there, there's other things you can look at, but at the end of the day, this is going to be the alternative and that there, you know, there's really no practical changes or the changes wouldn't have a greater impact or more money. I mean, if this is really it, based on your analysis, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, with what we have here. I was just thinking-
That's where we need-
Based on the conversation, there may be-
Right.
-something that could be, could be juggled.
Well, staff believes that we've, we've looked at all of the traditional widening options at this intersection that meets the scope of the project and we feel confident that these improvements will provide benefit to the intersection.
Well, a lot of, excuse me, a lot of those questions that surfaced have not been adequately explained. And I think for, for citizens, when, when they, when they view a proposal and they see that what's being recommended and they have suggestions otherwise that on the surface look like they're, they're more beneficial and more productive, I think they deserve a response. So whatever happens, I think that there's a lot of critical questions because it's, that area deserves a thoughtful response to their, their concerns. And then the last thing, it may be minor, but if we're going to make all these changes, there's got to be, we've got to do some of those little obvious things. We've got to take care of people going in and out of that back door at rush hour. It is just ridiculous there. Just is. And I don't know what we can do on the doctor's side. It just would seem they would want to do something, you know, for their patients, but, you know, I, you know, sometimes those things seem obvious and doctors disagree with you. So I-
Well, and it's not even, I don't think the, I'm not sure the physicians own, that they'll be whoever the property owner is.
Whoever the property owner is.
Maybe the practices-
Well, I just remember the, the outpouring from the doctors, it's the first time around. So that's, you're right. I really do, maybe the property owners who ought to be trying to protect a lot of those people coming in and out, you know, which also begs the question that came up in some of the things with some of the accident data, you know. Maybe it's not happening, but I recall a lot of incidents there, so.
Okay. Other questions concerning this? Well, one of my questions was why-
Well, one of my questions was why not a dual-left turn lane coming southbound on Kildare Farm Road? And you've answered that pretty well. It would just be cost prohibitive. Relatively familiar with the area, travel it pretty, pretty often to go to and from friends and family's house. And the left turn coming southbound on Kildare Farm at rush hour seems to be pretty, pretty bad. So I was kind of wondering, with, with all this, why not that? But I do think you've, you've given a good explanation there. I mean, at the end of the day, I'm not a traffic engineer, nor did I stay at a Holiday Inn Express, so. As far as the High Meadows thing behind the shop, I'm struggling to understand what the concern is there. To me, it's kind of one of those natural escape routes to avoid this intersection if you have to. Yes, it goes right adjacent to the backs of businesses that get delivery trucks and things like that. That's what they do to do business. And just like sometimes the train stops and the arms come down and you sit there for five, 10 minutes waiting on a train, sometimes you might have to wait a minute or two on a delivery truck. It's part of life. As far as the doctor's office road, I can guarantee you, the property owner ain't going to want to cut, shut that thing down. I can't think of any business owner that would want to eliminate access to their property. And sometimes, you know, people might just have to change their behavior. If they're trying to get out of that parking lot and get over to make a left on the Kildare Farm Road during rush hour traffic, they don't probably deserve a fender bender. Go down to High Meadows and make a left and go that way. I mean, you know, I think sometimes you try to fix stupid, and that's just not possible. Or they could figure out the other access in the parking lot, but I know these improvements will help traffic in the area. They're not a silver bullet. It's not going to solve all our woes. Even after spending $800,000, it's still going to be an F at PM peak hour. But I'm, my question would be, it seems like we spend a lot of time, effort, angst, money trying to solve that problem we have two hours a day, you know? I go through this intersection often on weekends and evenings, and it's a breeze. But yeah, 8:00 AM, people are going to work. It's going to be crowded. 5:00 PM, people are coming home from work. It's going to be crowded. Wait an hour and it's not so bad. So I am a little bit leery of some of the widening, just because before, as a council, we've kind of made the commitment to stick with four-lane roads and not go to those six, seven-lane roads. But we also know that we need capacity, and we like to, we strive to eliminate traffic, but I think sometimes, you know, maybe us or citizens need to be a little more realistic in that, you know, at 5:00 PM, there's going to be traffic. I don't know that I wouldn't vote against this tonight. I could probably vote for it. I'd like to hear some other, or learn more about some of the things that you guys have looked at, but I really don't know what else could be done, other than adding the extra left turn lane coming southbound on Kildare Farm Road, but we've heard why we really can't do that right now. So I think for, given the constraints of the area and the building locations and everything else, I think staff's done a pretty good job of getting the most bang for the buck. The only other thing that was a little funny to me was, you know, on Walnut Street, we talk about putting in medians and trees and stuff, and here we're talking about taking out medians and trees and stuff. And I just, I don't know. Like I said, I'm not a traffic engineer.
If I can just address the High Meadow real quick. I truly understand what you're saying about businesses, and actually understand it on the medical building side, because that is one where with just education, the behavior can change, and there is an outlet. I actually agree with you on that. On the other side, I look at it like traffic at schools during the opening and closing, just a signage or something that's set. The problem is from like four to six, maybe in the morning also, I don't think so, but four to six. And when one person decides to get out and it stops up everything, it's really at that time. And, you know, it's not one of those things where I think we have to make a lot of laws and that, but I do think, like, from four to six, as you're leaving there, it's a right turn only. And from four to six, as you're going down High Meadow, you're not making a left. There's no room to make a left unless somebody lets you in. And when they don't, then the traffic will back up all the way to Hampton Road. That's how far back it goes. Just for one person trying to make a left when there's three other entrances into that shopping center. So I don't think you're hurting business. I think that's just a little common sense thing, and you just have to look at it, see it.
And I'd be fine with hearing more and learning more, better understanding that.
Yeah.
But...
It's a minor thing, but this is such a...
I don't know how it impacts this, I guess.
Well...
You know, is that something we could send staff to go look at that specific concern without maybe holding up?
I understand. Yeah. I understand. I'm just, I'm just saying, it's, it's a little different than the trains, but it's, I understand the point, but it really does, it can really magnify instantly, and it's such a simple thing to, I think, solve. That's just my only point.
Fair enough. Ms. Akon.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Francis's point is well-made. The difference, one of the big differences between what we're proposing to do here for that two or more hours a day versus High House and Cary Parkway was that we were reconfiguring traffic 24 hours a day. Remember the jug handle thing? And we're not doing that here. So that's, that's a significant difference, and that's worth pointing out. I think the thing that just, there's so much good about this, like the extra, you know, the right turn, dedicated right turn lane going south and everything. I think the, it's the change in the aesthetic going north on Cary Parkway, going into Kildare Farm, that's the most troubling. Not to say that there's any way around that. It's just troubling, because instead of beautiful trees and all these, and this great-looking median, we're going to have a lot of concrete and a lot of that. And that is, that's a big change for those folks who live there, and it's a big change for those of us who, who go through there all the time. And I wish there was a way to do this without doing that. What I'm hearing staff say, and I, of course, trust you guys, because you're the engineers and I'm not, is that you study how to do this and to minimize the, what I'll call the damage, you know, the change in aesthetic as much as possible, and that this is what it's going to take to make a bad intersection better and still not great. And so I don't, you know, I was, I came into this thinking, you know, answer these questions and we'll know whether to vote this up or down. But I don't, I don't know, it's either you, you do this or you don't. You know, let the bad intersection be bad and live with it, or do what it takes to make it better. It seems like, I don't know what else is left to be.
Right. We've had, we've had very broad conversations about this very issue, about whether it is better for us to try to chase, you know, greater capacity at the risk of making our community look worse. And one of the, you know, one of the conclusions that we decided, and we talked about this before, is that we would, if, we know that people are going to be stuck in traffic because we just have an increasing population in this whole region. It's not just Cary, it's the whole region. People are going to be stuck in traffic, and one of the thoughts that we had at the time is, if people are going to be stuck in traffic, it ought to look good. We ought to make it look good. And when we strip away these trees, then people are still stuck in traffic, but now it looks bad. And so, you know, is this the direction we want to be going? And it's sort of like this little scope creep that we're doing. And I'll just add really fast, one thing I have seen down in Orlando, Florida, is they put these damn medians in, and then they put these gigantic flower pots on them, and they were, you know, beautiful and lovely, and it made you feel like it wasn't so bad that you had this big median. But I have a feeling NC, North Carolina DOT, would not be in favor of that.
They would like that one little bit.
Yeah, but I, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of just increasing and increasing and increasing the width of these intersections. We know that it just becomes an impediment for people to cross, becomes one of these barriers, you know, that we talk about. So I'm very leery about jumping into this improvement. I have no problem with the southbound right turn lane on Kildare Farm, but the rest of it, I do have reservations.
And the right, the dedicated right going north, coming up? Just that leg of it? No, it's a little picture. So coming up Cary Parkway, when you get to the intersection, you're going to turn left going south on Kildare Farm. This is the park that's troubling.
Well, that, yeah, that, actually, both. I mean, I, I'm not a big fan of dual-left turns. That's why I...
Left, I said right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure this out. I knew what you were talking about.
So sorry, yeah.
That's why I was wondering what the difference were, excuse me, is in the numbers between what's going through that rush hour that we're trying to fix and what's going through there the other 22 hours of the day.
I just had this epiphany while you were talking. You know, when we were, and I'm sorry to keep going back to my neighborhood, but when we were looking at High House and Cary Parkway, and this was right after we got on, so within the first two years we were on council, we were really struggling with this, and the issue was bad traffic and destroying that intersection. And we decided, and we, boy, did we get a lot of feedback, and I read every one of those comments, there must have been a thousand. People were really interested, and half were saying, I don't like waiting so long, the other half were saying, don't destroy the intersection. And what we decided was leave it alone. And staff came back to us with a darn-good-looking way to traditionally widen that intersection that really is going to, in some ways, make it look better. So by waiting, something better came up. I don't know, maybe that's what we need to do.
I'm not ready to, I'm not ready to approve the changes here.
Like I'm doing this.
It's drawn. I just, I just feel like we, this needs to be, as Jackson maybe explained better to us and to the citizens, but also maybe vetted further before we go and approve.
On this particular one?
On this particular one. I'm not, I'm not thrilled about the double lefts on Cary Parkway turning into Evans either, but, but that one, I, you know, it's, I'm more okay with that one than I am this one.
And I would go back to the mayor's point. What exactly are we looking for staff to bring us? Which I'm, I'm fine waiting a couple weeks, month, or whatever, let this cook some more, get some better ideas. But what exactly do we want staff to come, what do we want them to look at? What do we want them to do?
If you can't change Kildare Farm, and your only changes are on Cary Parkway, and you don't want to add lanes, then you're not really doing anything at all.
Well, to some of the other comments, like, you know, I agree, the right turn lane coming south on Kildare Farm, needed. The dual lefts on Cary Park, I don't know.
Well, that gets back to the signal timing that's going to improve Kildare Farm, so if you take that away, then yes, you'll have some improvement, but not a lot.
Well...
And is it worth the money?
And then it goes back to, I guess, my point was, do we just know that at 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, there's going to be traffic here? You know?
Well, you know, you're going to have traffic regardless, but what gets me is how hazardous this has become backing up for blocks, and that's, I think, a danger.
Well, with the right turn lane, we need some of that.
Some of that, but not a lot.
That's going to help.
I think, I think hearing everybody's heartburn with this, voting for this tonight, that we send it back, cook it some more, but what do we want them to add to the recipe?
Even if it just gives us more time to think about it and formulate more questions. I mean, I agree with you.
And so what do you want staff to do? That's what I would ask.
The problem with, from my perspective, the problem with answering that is just like when we dealt with High House. We're not the engineer. I don't know. What, what we said at High, what we said is, we've got to, you know, explore some other options and come back to us, because I don't, I don't have the answer, except I'm not feeling good that we've thought through all those other things. And if we did, then we're by, then I just want that explanation.
And they may have, but we need to understand the implications of what we're talking about. Weighing out the improvement during two hours of rush hour that has negative impact 22 hours a day. I want to know, I want to understand that. I also, you know, I really want us to understand what happens when we improve this. What is that triple convergence that we see back on here, where, you know, people who weren't using this intersection because it's congested now go, oh, it's fixed, now I'm going to come back? And then you, you know, build it up again, but now you have no trees and it looks ugly. So that's what I'm just curious about. I just, I just need to know more before I can feel comfortable.
And the, what I would add to that is, it seems like we're all in agreement that the dedicated right going south on Kildare is the right thing to do. What we have here is a maximum response. What would a less maximum response look like and do for us? You know, it's not going to make it an, even a, well, it's not going to make anything but still an F.
Just a better F.
Yeah.
Just a better F.
F minus or F plus.
I, and you know, all week, or as long as this has been out there, I've only had email about this intersection, none of the others, good or bad. And I haven't had any good on this. And so I, you know, maybe more time to hear from people who talk among themselves in Kildare Farm and say, well, you know, it's been so bad, dah dah dah, or those who go, I, you know, Mr. Yocum's not a minority here. I don't know. I just know that it may, I may not be able to support the maximum response. Does that mean that more people are going to sit there? Yes. Does that mean they're going to have a better view when they sit there? Yes. I don't know. That's the decision really before.
Well, and a lot of times, people just, like, you know, change their behavior.
Yes, they do. They go another way.
Like, you're worried about them coming back to the intersection if we fix it. Well, darn, if it continues to be congested, they find somewhere else to go.
They do.
And see, I don't think we're saying that the staff hasn't done a good job. That's not what I'm saying.
Right.
I'm saying, here's what it would take to maximize this intersection. Can you live with it or not? Is that what, is that what we want to do? And I'm saying, I don't know. Tonight, I don't know.
Ms. Dwygans, can I ask this? Can staff find out what each individual change will do as far as level of service? And I'm seeing a yes from Tim. That may be the information we need.
It's actually listed in the report in the evaluation table. Each of these improvements are listed separately and what type of level of service it would provide.
For the entire intersection?
Oh, for these particular...
So if, in other words, if we took away the dual-left turns on Cary Parkway, what does that do to timing, going every direction, and that kind of thing?
Okay.
So if I'm on Kildare Farm Road and you took the left turn lanes off of Cary Parkway, am I going to see just a five-second improvement with the right turn lane on Kildare Farm Road, or what? What am I going to see?
Well, actually, in the evaluation table, in the staff report, we did evaluate the southbound right turn lane with just the eastbound right turn lane and the, with the turn, eastbound and westbound left turn lanes and southbound right turn lane. We, we did evaluate a couple different scenarios, but I see what you're saying. You, you just would like to see, like, the southbound right on...
I think that's what they're asking.
If we do this, this is what's going to happen. If we do this, this is what's going to happen. Do the whole thing here, you know?
For instance, I'd like to see what would, you know, how much will it improve the people coming south with that dedicated right going north on Cary Parkway? You know, that kind of thing. If that was all we were willing to do, how much would that help? And I realize that doesn't help the people going north and south. It only helped, well, on Cary Parkway, but it helps the people going up and down Kildare Farm, especially going south.
Okay.
Because that seems like the one thing everybody says, that would really help folks leaving town and trying to go home somewhere else.
Trying to get out of Kildare Farm area.
So I would, I would ask for a motion excluding this one and then a motion for this one.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the other three that were part of the staff report be approved.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion?
So you mean the other four intersections?
The other four intersections.
I thought it was a total of four.
It was a total of five.
Oh, well, I just can't count. I make a motion that we...
I just want to make sure.
That we make, make a motion that we approve the other four that were reviewed tonight and make a motion they be approved as recommended.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now a motion on this intersection? To table indefinitely?
I mean, I'm not sure what their, the length of time that staff wants, but I would, let me try to stab at it. I would make a motion that, that we table this, what is it, the Cary Parkway-Kildare Farm improvements option, and send it back to staff for further review, addressing the concerns about, and come back with, excuse me, and addressing and providing us with additional information for other alternatives.
Okay. There's a motion, a second. And just for discussion's sake, I have to say that I've read this, and I think this And just for discussion's sake, I have to say that I've read this, and I think this is, unfortunately, the best solution we're gonna come up with. And so I do not support delaying, and I think we need to move ahead. So I'm gonna be voting against it.
I'm torn. I don't have any problem waiting a little bit to get some more information before making a final decision.
Okay. Other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to one.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Ms. Dwygans.
Thank you.
We now move to item 5.2, item pertaining to a potential amendment to architectural building design standards pertaining to painting masonry. Ms. Barker of our staff will present the information, and council may vote on this item tonight.
Good, good evening, Mayor, council members. Last September, you may recall, the council considered amendment to the building design standards regarding the potential for painting masonry buildings. At that time, council voted to keep the current standards and not paint masonry buildings. But during the same meeting, several council members asked staff to consider if there were some other alternatives. And staff has reevaluate this and come back with an alternative for you to consider. The alternative would keep the current limit with the exception to allow the painting of masonry buildings that were constructed prior to January 1, 1970, with the except, exception that it would neither be located in a historic district nor designated as an historic structure. Staff chose the January 1, 1970 date because it does provide some flexibility for owners of older buildings while maintaining a significant majority of the masonry buildings to not be painted. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
You sent out an email later, late today, that said there were 230-something structures since 1970 that fell in this area and?
Before 1970.
Before 1970, and it was 6-point-something percent?
63 percent, 6.3 percent.
Of them were non-residential, which comes out to be roughly 12? So we're talking about?
No, 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 that's 6.3 is the percentage of the entire buildings today that are non-single-family buildings.
That would be impacted by this?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's what I was talking about.
So it would be 234 buildings.
Yeah, there's 200, 6 percent of all buildings in Cary.
Oh, is the 234, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Other questions?
No, you, those were the questions I had, Ricky, you did good.
Guess I have a, one question. When you say designated as a historic structure, do you mean as a national register building? Do you mean as a landmark, or do you mean just as part of the inventory of historic?
Yeah, it should be a national historic structure. That's what it should read.
On the national, national register historic structure.
Yes, right.
Yeah, I, I was, I was hoping that would be, be broader. We have very few that are national register historic structures that are brick. So I guess that eliminates painting the Page Walker maybe, but it doesn't really do much for, for anything else. And I, I was kinda hoping that there would be something in here that had to do with the condition of the building, that there would be something in here that speaks to the painting is necessary due to, you know, ongoing deterioration of the building, the painting is necessary to preserve the building. It would be falling apart, in other words, if we didn't do this. And I realize that's maybe subjective and might be very hard to enforce if there was something like that. But that was my impression, that there, there would be something, that, that this wouldn't just be a blank check for 230-some-odd buildings.
Ed, may I ask you a question? Is your concern that you're afraid that everybody's gonna go out and paint buildings, or is your concern that someone's going to paint a building that, once painted, wouldn't qualify to be added later to the national historic registry?
Both. My line of questioning here is primarily the second piece, but, but both, because bottom line, when I look at an amendment, and I understand why we're doing this and why we requested it to be looked at, but when I look at an amendment to either an ordinance or some guidelines or whatever, and I look at what we presently have and what the new ones have, I just ask myself very simply, which do I like better? And I look at the two, and I happen to like the current wording better. So I, I think that's where my major objection is, and that goes along with your, your question there. I'm just concerned about painting brick. But if we are going to adopt this, I am then concerned about painting his structures that could be considered historic down the road. And the date, 1960, 70, 80, I mean, that doesn't really matter. We're, be continuing, if we follow through on the historic preservation master plan, we will be doing periodic inventories of our, of our buildings. And, you know, what is not historic today might be in 10 years from now, and all of a sudden we have this 1970 date.
At some point, we all come to store.
Someday, 1970 is gonna be 100 years from now.
Some of it is.
We probably won't be here to see. Anyway, I, I just have concerns, and, and I know why we're doing it, and I, I don't think it's, I don't think this change is gonna bring Cary to its knees, you know? I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a real biggie, but I have to vote no, just because I look at the current wording and the proposed, and I like the current.
What would you want to see the language changed to?
I'm like your daughter now, I mean, would she wear?
If it's, if it says or implies "national historic," could you change that language to something else that could make you, ease the concerns?
Well, I, I think if we're going to pass the, I, for me, I think I'm going to vote no one way or the other, but if we're gonna be passing this, it would be good to see wording that clarified that designated as a historic structure sentence. And I'd like to see that mean anything that has been, at least anything that has been listed in our historic mass preservation master plan inventory.
Okay.
But, you know, at, at very minimum. But I, I don't know how many that gets us out of the 235. I mean, I didn't.
And people who own those buildings may find that unnerving just because they feel like their rights are being taken away if, you know, they're identified in the master plan and then now they can't paint the building. Maybe if you're gonna do that, you, you have to give them some opportunity to, to come and say, "Look, we're, we're identified, but we really would like this," and let a, a call be made rather than just saying no.
Right, just as people today have, it's no for everyone. I mean, those, those people are concerned, and would be concerning for those people who would be excluded, absolutely.
All right, I, I can suggest, one option would be to, 'cause I know we're moving toward creating a priority list of historic structures, and that might be something we can come back, once the list kinda gets narrowed down to, you know, a certain manageable list, 'cause right now it's several hundred on there. So it might be something we can come back and add whatever list that we wanted to at that time.
But following along Jennifer's line, if I might, Mayor, you know, the town gets to list whether your building's old enough to be considered a historic structure, but as the owner of the building, you have the right, and if you wish, to get designated as a national historic structure, and that's your right. You may not wish to. And so we're casting this really wide net that says, well, because you're on our list, you can't do this with your property, and that doesn't, that doesn't feel good to me.
But that net would be narrower than what we have right now.
It would, but it wouldn't be narrow enough. I think it's really up to the property owner to decide whether their, their building, if they want their building to be designated as a historic structure versus recognized by us.
Identified.
Identified by us, okay. Yeah, that's a better word. I feel like there's a real difference there, and it has to do with property rights. So for that reason, I'm okay with not designated as a national historic structure. I'm okay with that wording tonight, Mr. Yocum, 'cause it's my sense this, that if this were to pass, at least that would be some comfort to you, not a lot, but some. But I'm not okay with, with using the terminology of listed in the historical master plan. I feel like that's a bit too broad.
Well, I thought the language that's in there now says if it's on the national, or it's interpreted as meaning if it's on the national registry, then?
Yeah, I'm talking about, I listed in as one of our historic buildings in the master plan.
Right, but as the language is written, written now?
It's national, yeah. I was just clarifying.
Well, national is not in the language right now.
That's why Mr. Yocum's saying.
We would suggest it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm okay with putting that in, 'cause I think that's kind of what we understood, even though it was unstated.
Yeah, if you, if you go through the process of being designated and take the advantages of being designated, then you're going to forego?
Certain things.
Certain things, like painting and modernization of your building, so that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
It's important to note, the 234, we couldn't find which one of those are, of those that are brick, so there's a, there's less than 234 that are brick or masonry.
The 234 of those structures constructed prior to 1970.
Yeah, there could be, it could be a lot less than that.
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation with the amendment to the language that clarifies the national historic registry.
And I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, discussion.
I have one question, and perhaps it's just in here, I missed it. Do we have any kind of language that we're also adding about maintaining that? Because painted brick peels, and we have all kinds of standards, like you have to keep your signs illuminated. Do we have something in there that says you have to keep your paint, your brick from peeling, having peeling paint?
That's in policy, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, where is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. That's somewhat challenging.
I mean, heck, some places intentionally make it look like the brick is peeling for that weathered look.
Yeah, there's a difference between that and then you have paint chips on the floor around.
I, I would not want any rules any different than we do for every other building in town that's painted.
There's a general thing about maintaining what's approved in the, under the site plan, but we'd have to broadly interpret that and say, "Hey, you know, your paint's peeling." We'd have to go, it could be challenging.
But I agree with Don. It doesn't matter what the material is that's painted, maintenance is maintenance. And, you know, we should?
So what, whatever enforcement we have for?
Should be, yeah.
Sighted buildings should apply to painted brick buildings.
Do we have standards? I mean, like, if we had?
It's not explicit now.
Beg your pardon?
It's not explicit in the ordinance that you, it says, "Hey, you have to maintain and not have peeling, peeling paint." You know, we don't, it would have to be broadly interpreted that was part of a maintenance of a building on the exterior, but?
This could be a can of worms.
We can, yeah, it could be tough.
It could be an enforcement nightmare.
It could be an enforcement nightmare.
Yes.
Not for us. So we're gonna pretend you didn't ask that question. Yeah, I, I have some reservations about that.
Okay, so we're ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries four to two. Thank you, Mr. Barker.
Thank you.
This takes us to item 5.3, is the proposed 2014 legislative agenda. Ms. Hi of our staff will present the information, and council may vote on this tonight. Ms. Hi.
Good evening, Council. As you're aware, the North Carolina General Assembly is in recess at the moment, but we'll convene again for the short session on May 14th. You have before you proposed advocacy principles, legislative agenda, and position statements for your consideration. The advocacy principles provide a guiding framework for staff to respond appropriately as events unfold during the session. The legislative agenda is more specific list of issues the council may wish to weigh in on, and the position statements are detailed rationale and explanation for specific items. Staff recommends adoption of the advocacy principles, legislative agenda, and position statements, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
We, as a practice, unanimously support these or not? So if we're not in unanimous support of any one item, we usually take that off?
Yes, the, the delegation generally only wants to consider items that are unanimously approved, so for cohesion of the, of the statement, it's better not to address something at all rather than to have a divided recommendation.
Okay, very good. Mr. Franks?
Thank you, Lana. A lot of it doesn't look much different than previous years, and then there's some new stuff, but the one thing I just, I'd like to recommend, a couple text amendments under legislative agenda bullets. Support for the preservation of local land use interest and decision-making in the creation and adoption of a, I would like to insert the word "strong regulatory framework" for shale gas development that protects the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and environment and water quality while facilit, while possibly, or potentially, I'm not sure which word, facilitating necessary economic development for the overall well-being of North Carolina. I like, other than those two little ads, I really like the way you've worded this, 'cause it doesn't say we support it, doesn't say we don't support it. It does say, if you're gonna do it, we want to be included in the decision-making process of it, but I feel like we need to really make a statement by saying "strong regulatory That's my only really options on that. I, I think you've worded it very well.
I support that, the addition of "strong" before regulatory framework. I think it is an important point to make.
And if I could make a comment on that very same bullet, I support the "strong" also. I think that is a, a good comment. But I was thinking of, of one wording change here, letting the whole thing go along just as it is and then putting a period after water quality. I know where you have, "we're potentially," or "possibly," I mean, it's a word we're kinda struggling. I think maybe we're struggling with that word because that last clause, I don't know if it adds a whole lot to what we're asking. And if anything, it may weaken what we're asking. Maybe it's intentionally put there for that reason, to be, to sound nice, but frankly, I, I think a period after water quality would make me feel uncomfortable.
What was the, what was the rationale for adding that, that phrase?
It's an acknowledgement that there seems to be a lot of interest in this and a push towards it, so that if it's going to happen and for the economic development of North Carolina, therefore, make sure that it's done under a strongly, a strong regulatory framework.
See, I think that's implied, and I think we can put that period there and do fine.
And I don't have a problem with leaving that out, but I do think we need something in here on this topic, because if we don't have anything in there, I think that's, makes us weaker.
Absolutely.
So I, I'm fine with that.
No, I think if there were some of us, if this were like my legislative agenda instead of ours, or if it were yours instead of the rest of our, I think we might all word this a little differently. But since this is our legislative agenda and it's at this point in time, I mean, I, I think I would be very comfortable with, with leaving the wording as it is with the period instead of the last.
And removing the "while facilitating this."
Removing the "while."
Putting a period after water quality.
So, so can I get a motion and have you read that actual change in this particular item, just so everyone is clear?
Well, I'll move that we recommend the adoption of the advocacy principles, 2013 North Carolina legislative agenda, and the position statements with one amendment, and that is, under the bullet, for, and under legislative agenda, that we reword that to, "support for the preservation of local land use interest and decision-making in the creation and adoption of a strong regulatory framework for shale gas development that protects the health, safety, and welfare of citizens and environment and water quality."
Second.
Okay, so motion and a second, discussion.
I'll just say here that this is fairly brief, but it's extremely meaty. And this is something that I really would like us to work on getting out to our citizens so they understand what is happening at the state level and what it means to their living here in Cary. That Jordan Lake is extremely impactful, and the far-reaching implications of the aesthetic controls could really be impactful to Cary citizens, and I'm not sure most Cary citizens are aware of that impact. So I like that we are succinct in this legislative agenda, but I do think it's important for us to convey that clearly to our citizens.
Okay.
And I also love the fact that we don't make a bunch of political statements about things that doesn't really impact Cary, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Hi.
Thank you.
That takes us to closed session. I would entertain a motion.
Can you read the motion?
Yes.
Okay, all right. This is a suggested motion for closed session. Pursuant to GS 143-11A, 3 and 4, I move that we hold a closed session to, one, consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town. Among other things, the council expects to receive advice concerning the following lawsuit, Blythe Construction Incorporated versus the Town of Cary. Number 2, discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the town, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by town, by our town, in negotiations. And 3, to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143-318.10E.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed.
Thank you.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Visit the Town of KIRI website at townofkirii.org.